Good evening and welcome to the zoning board of appeals hearing of Wednesday, April 26, 2023. At this time, I'm going to ask that we all rise to pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd ask that you all remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our soldiers, past and present. Thank you. This time, I'd like to announce that our next regular scheduled meeting for the Board of Appeals is Wednesday, May 10, 2023, at 6:00 PM here at 400 Slocum Road in Dartmouth. Moving on, the next case that we have is a continued case. We all know it's been continued numerous times, but it was last continued from March 8th of 2023. It's a use variance case 2022-01. The petitioner is Claudia Arsenio. The subject property is located at 155 Old Fall River Road, also known as MAP 69 lot 16. It's located within a limited industrial district, and we've already waived the reading of the abutters list, gentlemen. In this case, the petitioner is seeking a use variance to construct an 80-foot by 100-foot square structure for a marijuana manufacturing facility. They're seeking relief on the Article IV, Section 375.4.2 and Article IV, Section 375.4.3 special permit uses. So, gentlemen, I think if you recall, and maybe you could refresh my memory if I misstate anything, the last time this came before us, which was several months ago, there was a letter that was presented to us, and it's a letter dated August 2, 2022, and that was sent to us by Farm Bureau. And we had some concerns about the interpretation of what, of certain language in that letter, one having to do with a residential dwelling and another one having to do with driveway usage. Does that sound accurate, gentlemen? All right. So, since then, I guess there have been some, there's been a situation which there's been some change of individuals with authority there from the Farm Bureau, and we received a letter recently, which I have here in the file, and I want to read it into the record for our viewers at home. And the rec, the letter is from...
Mr. President, I would like to recuse myself from this case.
Certainly, yes, you're right, Dr. Ag. I apologize for that. You have previously, I believe on more than one occasion, recused yourself, and I didn't expect it to be any different tonight, but publicly, yes, we acknowledge that you're recusing yourself, Dr. Ag.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, we received a letter, and the letter is dated March 23, 2023. It's from the Law Office of Smolik and Vaughn, and it's addressed to the Board of Appeals, and it starts with, "Dear members of the Board of the Dartmouth Board of Appeals, please be advised that the Board of Directors of the Farm Bureau Agricultural Preservation Foundation Corporation has been requested to affirm its position regarding the proposed use of Schofield Farm. As previously stated in an August 2, 2022 communique on July 19, 2022, chaired by its president, Warren Shaw, and with a quorum present, the Board of the Farm Bureau Agricultural Preservation Foundation Corporation reviewed the relevant agricultural preservation restriction and heard reports from members and council. The Board affirmed that whereas the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, in collaboration with the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission, has determined that with the appropriate licensure, cannabis might be lawfully cultivated, processed, and sold on and from land burdened within APR. Accordingly, with the appropriate licenses and permits, cannabis may be grown, processed, and sold from Schofield Farm. The Board also reviewed the terms and conditions of the residential structure within the building envelope, more specifically, the grantor's right to conduct or permit. B1, the maintenance and use of such driveways to access the residence and other portions of the property and any existing trails and farm roads on the restricted area substantially in their present condition or as reasonably necessary for the use thereof herein or herein after permitted through approval of the grantee on the Section C herein. And B3, wherein, within infrastructure envelope, the construction, use, maintenance, repair, and replacement for single-family residential purposes only of a single-family residence together with an access drive and parking and appropriate pertinent structures, such as a garage, swimming pool, and fencing, and including gardening and landscaping, incidental to such use as well as buildings or structures for agricultural purposes. The Board found no provision within the APR instrument that requires or obligates the existing structure within the infrastructure envelope to be used as a residence. However, the Board found there does appear to be a restriction that the use of the driveway is limited to access, is limited to access the residence. In the event there is no residence, the grantee may prohibit the use of the driveway for other than residential access. The Board further reviewed provisions of Section A, Subpart 2 of the APR instrument being, 2, no existing building, residential dwelling, structure, tennis court, artificial swimming pool, road, parking lot, mobile home, utility pole, tower, conduit, or line, or other temporary or permanent structure or improvement requiring construction within lot area (964,374 square feet, 22.1 acres) shall be improved, expanded, reconstructed, or relocated on the restricted area unless approved by the grantee on the Section C. I bring your attention to the Dartmouth's enabling legislation concerning the use of community preservation funds for the acquisition of Schofield Farm as set forth in Article 12 and Article 13 of the June 6, 2006 Springtown Meeting Warrant. According, compliance with the provisions, the General Law 44B, Section 12, requires the property to be permanently restricted for the intended purposes. After deliberation, the Board found there is no obligation that the residential structure need to be physically occupied as a residence. However, pursuant to the terms of the APR and the intent of the acquisition, the structure must remain a residential structure. Therefore, the Board reasoned that any alterations proposed and are executed relating to the existing residential structure must be consistent with the residential provisions of the Massachusetts Building Code. Please be advised that the Board has not deviated from its previously articulated position. If you have any further questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Francis A. Deluna." All right, gentlemen, so, at this point in time...
You have another...
I have another one, I just want to comment on this. Do you guys have any comments about this one? Do you feel any more comfortable now with this explanation versus the one that we received back in August of 2022?
Well, let's hear from Attorney Manning on that.
All right, then, before we do that, I'll read the other letter.
Yeah, read the other one, too.
So, we received an email from, it was forwarded to our office, and it says, "To whom it may concern," and it's from a Susan Murray from the Dartmouth and it's signed, "Respectfully submitted Dartmouth Agricultural Commission. To whom it may concern, at its meeting on February 9, 2023, the Dartmouth Agricultural Commission voted with majority vote to retract the email sent to you on March 9, 2022, and instead provide full support for Claudia Arsenio's application for a variance to allow for a cannabis production operation at 155 Old Fall River Road. The Commission supports agricultural endeavors and can enhance a farm's economic viability and long-term sustainability. We wish Ms. Arsenio the best and look forward to seeing the growth of her farm. Respectfully submitted and signed," well, respectfully submitted, and it's the Dartmouth Agricultural Commission. There was no specific signature, because it is an email. All right. So now, is there any, Mr. Hume, is there anything you'd like to ask at this point about this letter? We can call upon the petitioner's representative.
No, I think I'd like to hear from the petitioner's representative.
Representative. Okay, so at this point in time, we'll call upon Mr. Manning, Attorney Manning.
Good evening, gentlemen, for our bi-monthly get-together. Before I begin my comments, I'd like to clarify one thing in the record. I have an email if, from the Dartmouth Agricultural Commission back on March 9 of 2022. They expressed by unanimous vote not to support my client's petition. This is an email from the same commission, and it's dated March 19 of this year, in which it says, "To whom may concern at the February 9, 2023 meeting, the Dartmouth Agricultural Commission of the Dartmouth Agricultural Commission, it was voted 6, 1 to 1 far against an abstain. To retract the email sent to you on March 9, 2022, as seen below, instead provide full support for Claudia Arsenio's application for variance to allow for a cannabis production operation at 155 Old Fall River Road."
I just read that into the record, Mr. Manning.
You read the retraction?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just read that into the record. It's an email from a Susan Murray, and it was dated Tuesday, February 28, 2023.
You know, that's what happens when you try to think without listening.
Oh, no, no, that's all right. I'm sure you're doing some preparation and, you know, it's happened to me.
So, let me, let me, let me just get back to it, then. Gentlemen, we started this well over a year ago, and I think it's appropriate that first I'd like to just summarize where we're at. You know, at the initial presentation that we made, the applicant clearly demonstrated that she has met the requirements for a variance under both your zoning regulations and under the statute. The Board initially, their feeling was that we also had to satisfy the special permit requirements of the marijuana overlay district, despite the fact the application was just for a variance from its geographical limitations. We accepted that, we came back at another meeting, and again, we adequately demonstrated that we met each and every one of the requirements for a special permit under the marijuana overlay district. The Board then expressed concerns with our application due to the look of the proposed building. So again, we had a continuance, we came back, and if you remember, my client's architect came, made a presentation to you, giving you schematic drawings of what the structure would look like, that he had made it look more in tune with the bond than any type of a commercial endeavor. And I think that was done, again, to the satisfaction of the Board. On June of last year, the Board then expressed a concern with language in the APR, which states, "Prior to making an application for approval from the Farm Board, the applicant will not seek to secure other applicable permits." I think Mr. Hume was the one that pointed out, saying maybe we had jumped the gun. And we explained to the Board at that time that we had in fact contacted the Farm Bureau before coming before you, and they had sent an initial letter stating that they approved that the change of use was in fact acceptable. That was then apparently rescinded, and the Board asked us to go and try to clarify things with the Farm Board. And that's where we ran into the proverbial buzzsaw. On August 2, as Mr. Chairman indicated, the Farm Bureau issued its first letter, and in that letter, they actually, in all their letters, they've confirmed, I think, the one important issue that was overriding issue that the Board was concerned with. Yes, we can grow cannabis under the APR, but for some reason, the Board also felt to go beyond that, and, and they, in their letter, they, they also indicate that the APR does not require us or obligate, obligate the existing structure which, where Ms. Arsenio currently lives, to be used as residence. Well, that's fine. The Board then came to that conclusion, to two conclusions which we vehemently disagree with and which frankly are illogical and contradictory. They state that the driveway is limited to access to the residence only, and that the Farm Bureau may prohibit use of the driveway for other, anything other than residential purposes. But that completely mischaracterizes the APR. If you look at the APR, they've taken half of a sentence and drawn an illogical conclusion. What the sentence actually says in the APR is the maintenance and use of such driveways to access the residence and other portions of the property. You can't ignore and other portions of the property and limit it to just access to the residence, but that's what the Farm Bureau insists on doing. Most troubling, the Board then concludes that, that the structure, it says, does not have to be used as a residence, must remain a residential structure. Obviously, this is a contradictory conclusion, inconsistent with the purposes of the APR, which is agricultural preservation. It clearly shows, too, that the Farm Bureau has confused what our affirmative duties under the APR for the applicant and reserved rights under the same. This language about residential structure is in the Section B of the APR, which talks about that she has all the rights and duties and obligations of ownership, but that these following things could be undertaken. And that's when it talks about a residential structure. It also talks about a pool. We're not required to have a pool, we don't have a pool. The APR does not require the building to be occupied as a residence, and any, the only thing it requires is that any alteration or improvement of the building has to be approved by the Farm Bureau. There's nothing that requires it to be a residential structure. And I can't emphasize enough, as we said to you from the very first meeting, we're not planning, this, this variance request doesn't entail any renovations, alterations, or improvements to the residential structure. The only thing we said about the residential structure is that Ms. Arsenio has a plan for a nonprofit agency that she hopes to run in conjunction with a cannabis-growing facility, and that it's her hope that she'll be able to house it in, in the form of residence. And that can be done even if, as Mr. Bragg wants us to do, that it maintains its status as a residential structure, which we don't have to, but we have the right to. We can still have bedrooms in there, doesn't mean we have to have a bed or pillows, we can still have bathrooms in there, we can still have cooking facilities in there, but it can still be used as an office. Many of us, I think Mr. Chairman included and Mr. Hume included, have offices in form of residence, and we have kitchens, we have baths, I know I do in my office, and we have rooms that can be deemed bedrooms. So, so again, the Farm Bureau has gone way beyond what we're asking for them. And that's, then, we asked for clarification, and they sent the most recent letter, just read into the record by Mr. Chairman, and basically, if you look at it, it's almost verbatim the same as the prior letter.
So, if I may, Attorney Manning, I share the same feeling that the letter is really, on its four corners, it's pretty much the same, saying the same thing except slightly differently, but what do you say about the fact that we have a bylaw that says that a residence has to be a certain distance from a marijuana grow facility?
Well, what I say is just what the Farm Bureau says. They say it can be used as a residence. We've indicated to you it's not. I've said to you from the first meeting, you can put a condition on our variance that it shall not be used as a residence, and therefore, then it would comply, and that's one of the special conditions of the...
I think I'd, I'd feel more comfortable with something that said it shall not be occupied as a residence.
Occupied, as a residence.
Because otherwise, it would be in violation with the...
That's right. Well, the thing is, and this is where I don't particularly like to and get involved in private restrictions. I consider this a private restriction. We're here to enforce bylaws, not private restrictions that are put in or covenants that are put in with associations. Here, it happens to be some organization with a private party. I don't particularly like to get involved in that, because this is what we end up with, is interpretation issues of what their bylaw really means, and what happens when it conflicts, when I say the bylaw, but their restriction, what is, what happens when it conflicts with the existing bylaw that we have in the town? And I think there's some of that going on here.
Well, I think you're absolutely correct, because I, my, next thing I was going to say, gentlemen, is that we've fallen down the rabbit hole that I tried to express over and over again not to fall down from the very first meeting. As I said, you know, this Board is, is limited to zoning and exceptions to zoning, that's all you do. Every variance, every special permit is an exception to permitted uses under zoning, and you're here to interpret and enforce zoning. As I told you, we have to get local and state licensing for this facility. We have to get approval of plans from Farm Bureau, even though they don't probably know how or why. We have to go to Planning Board, we're probably going to have to deal with, with Conservation Commission and possibly Board of Health. There's a million different other applications and permits we have to go through. And what's happened is, is that because of, of issues that kept being raised by other people and because of the APR, I think we got sidetracked, and we fell right into the trap that you just stated, Mr. Chairman, that we're here arguing and debating and trying to decide what the APR requires. Well, we still have to get approval from the Farm Bureau, and that's where we're going to have that debate. But for our purposes, you know, our purposes here are very limited. Did we meet the requirements of a variance under your bylaws? And, I mean, there's even a quote from Mr. Chuba in one of the minutes, saying, "Yes, we have in fact met those requirements." Did we meet the special permit requirements of the overlay district? Yes, we have. As long as you put the condition about no occupation of the residence as a residence, we're 100% in compliance with that. That's where the focus should end. I understand that you, you wanted us to find out about whether cannabis is an agricultural endeavor under the APR. I understand that.
Well, not only that, you also, I think you have to appreciate the fact that we also had a lot of people concerned about, about this, and this is a unique situation, right? We have one in which the town actually exerted and went out of its way to acquire this property to impose these restrictions, which I would suggest were quite extensive, and then, in essence, you know, people were looking, and when I first looked at this, it almost appeared as if it was a way of circumventing some of what these restrictions were actually put into place for. So, there were those pressures going on, we've looked at it, right? And having taken, you know, the time to look at it extensively, I know that I feel a little more comfortable that we're not going to resolve this situation with Farm Bureau.
It will be resolved here.
That's something you're going to have to do if I have your client.
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, and, and Mr. Chairman, it's no different, it's no different than, than people who come and, coming for variance for different reasons, and they have restrictive covenants on their land, okay? It's, it's, with all due respect, it's not your job to go through those restrictive covenants and make sure that what they're requesting is in compliance with. That is a matter between the ones who hold the restrictive covenants, the other neighbors or the developer, and the homeowner, and that's something that has to be dealt, dealt with in another step. And I understand, you know, I've sat in your position for years, I understand that, you know, there were volumes of people, both for and against, and, and there was a lot of discussions going on, and a lot of things got thrown at you, but I'm, I'm trying to end the, get us out of the rabbit hole and get us focused really on what we hear, and it sounds like you are, too. And with that said, I, I have said it repeatedly, and I will say it once more, we have met the requirements for variance, and I really think the Board agrees with me on that. And with that, the Board should vote and allow the variance.
Thank you. But before you step down, I just want to, is there anything you'd like to ask, Attorney Manning?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Attorney Manning on, on the last letter that we, that came, that you can't say that you can't use the driveway to access the property, because clearly it says that you can use it to access any building or structure for agricultural purposes, and this building is for agricultural...
Any other portions of the land, it says.
So, the way around it, even if they don't, if you don't want to get a curb, a new curb cut for that building, you can use the existing curb cut and access the building from the property. That would say, okay, you use an existing driveway to access the agriculture structure which is related to the use.
Which, which if you look at the pictures in the plan, there's, there's no curb, and it's not really a driveway.
I understand, but, you know, I mean, I understand.
It's an access point.
Exactly, I mean, that would satisfy if we're, want to go around, but now, I think I just have a question for Mr. Bragg, and I agree on the condition. Now, is placing the condition for the existing dwelling or the existing residence to be, not to be used as a residential structure or not to be...
Not to be, I'm going to say occupied.
Occupied.
Not to be occupied.
Not to be occupied. Would that satisfy the zoning bylaws of the section of 370, whatever, the, of that you are 500 feet away from an existing residence? That's my question.
Depends on how, on how this Board interprets that that needs to remain.
If you follow the statement that the Farm Bureau has, you have to look at that.
If you deviate from that, then, well, that...
I don't have a problem with the appearance, it could be, it could appear as a residential structure, but nobody's living in it, I don't...
To answer your question, I can answer your question. If it can't be used as a residence, then if it's within 50 feet of it, it's within 50 feet of something that's not a residence. So, so you're talking about the, those are the special permit requirements under the overlay district, and that puts us in compliance. It's not going to be occupied as a residence, so it's not within 500 feet of a residence.
But they're not, my understanding is they're not here asking for, they're not asking for a special permit, they're asking for a variance.
No, no, but, but Mr. Chairman, if you remember...
Yes, I do, I do remember that. We wanted to ensure that those were satisfied.
It was said, I think it was pointed out by Mr. Haddad, that, that even though we're getting a variance, we still have to meet the requirements of special permit under the overlay district, and we, we came back to another meeting and showed all that, and we had the, the proof of the 500 feet through the engineer, etc.
Well, that was my concern, I think, from the first meeting, because, you know, not, because we had a similar case on Font's Corner, I think, for Mr. Penagakis, if you recall, and we turned him down because of that. But there was another structure that he didn't have control of that was going to be a residence, you know? One of the structures he had control of, and he said, "I'm willing to turn it not into..."
I think that one was, it was two marijuana facilities within 500 feet.
Within 1,000 feet.
Within 1,000 feet of each other. That's what that was.
Well, they had no, had, they had one structure across the street, Mr. Chair, that was less than 500, just barely.
That as well? I remember the other part.
And my understanding is this Board doesn't have the authority to, to grant variances on those, which I don't believe so. I think it, it...
I don't believe it.
The only Board of Appeals can grant any variance.
Right.
And I mean, if it came to getting you a variance to, for the placement, to relief from the dimensional relief for the 500, I think would have been another route you have to go by. I don't think we need to go that route at this time.
We don't need to, because with the language that Mr. Chairman suggested, I, we've agreed with that.
I'm fine with that, and I really believe that this particular piece of property met the, the variances, the, the saturated variances for the use, as you had demonstrated, that because of the conditions of the soil, it's really hard to grow the, the crops that you need, and, you know, basically, let's say, unique to that particular property, and also, I know there was concerns about the appearance of the structure itself, and we went back and forth with the architect, and he did submit the New England-style barn to be placed there, and I think I'm...
All right, you, Mr. Hume, and anything you'd like to add?
No, I mean, I agree with Mr. Chuba. I think he's met all the requirements that are necessary for him to be granted the special permit. He comes in with more issues with that piece of property than most people come in with, so I don't, I don't really see a problem with that. My biggest concern, I guess, was the same concern that you just stated, namely, the residence within 500 feet, and I think that language, if it's put into the decision...
Yeah, I've, I've got it in here. I've got, I've got something I've proposed.
I did submit, many, many months ago, a proposed decision, and I believe that was one of my, I put that as a condition in mind.
I didn't happen to see it, so I ended up adding it, but if it's in here, then we'll go through it again, but I didn't happen to see it. But there's a couple of the things that I, I've decided, just to make some, and again, I'm just proposing this to the members, and it's not in concrete, we're going to, we're going to go over this. So, just to make it clear for viewers at home, we did close the public comment portion of this hearing several months ago, although I did have some exceptions where I did allow some letters and read in some letters. These two that I read were as a result of, you know, with things that we had asked for specifically, and when, when someone retracts a position, I think it's important that we know about it. So, the public comment portion of this is closed, so if you gentlemen want to have any further discussion on this, we can have discussion. I'm not going to close the hearing, because I'd rather read the decision in first, some of what we have here, a proposed decision, and then if we need any input from the petitioner, we can gather the input from their counsel if there's anything that's wrong. Fair enough?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so, Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Comments. So, you're going to, the language will be written to kind of like circumvent or bypass what the APR says for the single residence as one of the conditions, is that...
Well, what's, what we're saying is, is, I, I think what the APR is saying is that it has to have and maintain a residential character as a dwelling. That's fine. What I'm saying is, is I don't care what it is, quite frankly, all I know is it cannot be occupied as a residence.
And you can, you can also add a condition that has to remain, it has to keep the appearance of a residential structure. You're not going to go and modify the structure and make it look like, like a business, like a retail... a retail.
We can do, if you want to do that, we can do that as well.
Absolutely.
Would you feel more comfortable if we did something like that?
I think it's important, per the language of the building code, and for, Mr. Manning alluded to it also, he had bathroom showers, whatever, that's why I'm asking. I think that if you're going to, you would need the language that says it has to remain X, Y, and Z per the Massachusetts building code, as the Farm Bureau says. Secondly, my, my other question, comment, condition that I would ask is that, I'm not sure where Ms. Sonny, Mrs. Sonny, I'm sorry, where you're going to live, but it's important to know if it has to remain unoccupied, it would have to be vacated before any permits were applied for in any way, shape, or form.
All right, I'll let you enforce that.
Mr. Chairman, a comment on that. What I would just say is, and that's fine with us, except that it should be before a building permit issues.
Yeah.
You know, and not before it's applied for, because we might run into a buzzsaw with Mr. Bragg. Not that anyone's ever run into a buzzsaw like you do.
I agree. Or before construction, even.
Right.
Okay. All right. However, one, because I wouldn't be able to approve, I wouldn't be able to issue the permit.
Right, no, I understand, yeah.
As long as the client's...
That's the only way you can really enforce it, right?
Right. That way, I could, I could hold the permit if there was problems.
So, it should say, prior to the issuance of a building permit...
Correct.
...the premises shall be vacant.
Yep. Well, not occupied as a residential property.
I was going to, I was going to put, shall be vacant of occupants.
Well, she could run an office out of there.
There's nothing wrong, then she can do that. We're not saying she can't.
But you just used the word vacant.
Okay, so you're saying vacant of, okay, so I do have to, I do have to tighten that up.
Not used as a...
Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the premises shall be...
If you go back to the Farm Bureau language, where it talks about, they don't, it has to look like a single residence, but as long as not occupied as such, I think if you wrote something along those lines that has that language in it, and then, because she's going to occupy it again at some point in time, to say she cannot occupy it at all, now you're putting a restriction on a condition, she can't use it for her nonprofit or whatever she chooses to do.
Well, she can't occupy it as a residence.
As a residence.
That's correct.
And I would say probably not before...
All right, we'll get to that, we'll finite that.
The language, because I think, let's say she went through the permitting process, and then for some reason, another year before she gets to the building permit process.
That's why I'm saying, well, I'm not saying the application, that's why you didn't want an application. That's why you want the permit prior to the issuance of a permit.
Issuing, yeah.
That's why, okay? All right, so, let's start with this. It was, the board has determined the following. The Locust property located at 155 Old River Road is identified on map 68, lot 16. Do you all have a copy of this?
Oh, I don't.
I do.
Oh, you do.
I gave you one, Malim, but...
You know what, let me, let me see, I thought I had, is that? I had something a long time ago, that didn't change?
What is he looking for?
Okay, it's okay, I can, it's fine, I don't need, I can share with Attorney Yuman. That's fine.
There's one right here, bud.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Locust property located at 155 Old River Road is identified as map 68, lot 16, and is located in a limited industrial and single residence B zoning district. The portion of the parcel wherein the cannabis-growing facility will be located is completely within the limited industrial zoning district. Number, I'm going to, I'm not going to have number three, we're going to make three, four, and change it from there. There are presently three structures located within the portion of the parcel zone limited industrial, a residence, a barn, and a small barn structure. The property is subject to an agricultural preservation restriction, which restricts use of the portion of the parcel zone single residence B from non-agricultural uses, and which prohibits the construction of non-agricultural structures except within a 1.5 acre infrastructure envelope, which is located within the limited industrial zoning district portion of the parcel. Currently, the property is being used as a farm. The petitioner owner is seeking a variance to demolish the existing barn and to construct an 80-foot by 100-foot agricultural building to be used as a cannabis-growing facility. The variance is required since the property lies outside the marijuana establishment overlay district. This petition meets the statutory requirements for granting the requested variance. A, there are circumstances related to soil shape and topography that especially affect the subject property that do not generally affect the zoning district in which the structural land is located. Due to the existing agricultural preservation restriction on the subject property, the present use of the property is limited to perpetual protection and preservation of agricultural lands. The petitioner, however, presented a report from an environmental consulting service provider, which concluded that, with the exception of a small portion of the property located in the southeast corner, the entire parcel consists of hydroic soils, which are a challenge for agricultural use with substantial financial investment. These soil conditions render the majority of the parcel useless for the restricted agricultural uses and is unique to this parcel.
Mr. Chairman, quick question, where it says with substantial, shouldn't it say without substantial financial investment?
A challenge for agricultural, without substantial, yes. Thank you.
I think also, we had some testimony that the property was in a high water table as well.
Okay, well, that's hydroic soils, is that reflective of that?
No.
Okay, we can add some language up here of also a high water table. We could put in here, consists of hydroic soils with a high water table. And then we'll go on to say, which are a challenge for the agricultural use without substantial financial investment. That make sense?
Yes.
All right. B, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner. Petitioner presented evidence that if the protections of the marijuana establishment overlay district are not extended to this property, she will not be able to sustain a farm at dislocation. The barn is in need of substantial repairs, and there are no grant funds available for that purpose. Further, that petitioner's present farming operations have proven to be financially counterproductive since the crops she can grow simply do not produce enough money to cover the costs involved. If she is not permitted to add cannabis to the crops grown, the crops grown, she faces financial ruin. I should just say, if she is not permitted to add cannabis to the crops grown, she faces financial ruin.
Yeah, that's repeated, okay.
C, desirable relief may be granted without detriment to the public good. Petitioner has shown that locating a cannabis-growing facility at the premises will have limited impact on community character, which, excuse me, community character, comma, will be located away from residences and schools, and will be close to highway access, thereby minimizing the impact on the town. No retail sales will take place at or from the premises, and the design of the proposed structure is consistent with agricultural buildings within the immediate area. The petitioner has also shown that the proposed change in use will have a positive impact on the area aesthetically, will allow continued agricultural use of the property, will provide employment opportunities, and will provide support for local businesses. I don't know how I feel about the last part there, it's going to provide support for local businesses. I don't know if I agree with that. What do you think, gentlemen? We could cross that off and still be adequately satisfying that provision. I don't, I don't understand how it's going to, maybe I'll call upon the petitioner. How's this, if you could come up, how is it that you believe that this is going to support local businesses?
There will be some people working at the facility, the people who are working there need to eat, will be going to local restaurants, there has to be purchase of supplies and materials, whether she has to go to Staples for office supplies, or whether she needs to go to Lowe's or Home Depot. So, I mean, there will be some offshoot, you know, we're not conducting sales, but we're, we're going to need things for the...
I get it, thank you.
Also, didn't we say some of the proceeds will go to help...
The nonprofit, yes.
Did we mention this anywhere?
No, not on my aware of.
Should we add that? I mean, okay.
I don't think it's necessary, because, you know, it's, that's, that's the intention, that's the plan. Whether it comes to fruition, it's dependent upon a lot of other things, as you can imagine.
E, the variance will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. The purpose of the marijuana overlay district include having facilities in an area that will have the least impact on community character, away from residences and schools and to close, and close to highway access, in order to minimize the impacts on the town. Petitioner has shown that her request do not derogate from these purposes. I ended it there, crossed off the rest. As far as conditions go, gentlemen, the board, the board's approval shall be specifically conditioned upon compliance with the following. One, petitioner will secure any and all necessary approvals and or permits from all applicable local boards and agencies, as well as the state and Farm Bureau prior to issuance of a building permit. And number two, the board-approved plans references, referenced as Gardener's Medicinal Cannabis Agribuilding, drawn by John Buckley, that's the one that was the elevations that we had of what the building looked like, right? Which I think was aesthetically pleasing. And then we have the third one, which is the one that's a little hairy that we're going to have to work on here, is, and this is just the rough language I put here, the existing dwelling located at the premises shall not be occupied as a residence at any time, shall remain as a residence, and prior to the issuance of a building permit, the premises shall be vacant and not occupied as a residence.
Any changes or modification to the structure shall be in compliance with the board, with the state, right?
Yes.
For, I think, where's that language in the...
So, number four, we want to add another condition, let's see what that other one would be.
Any modifications or the existing...
How about any, would it be any future modifications to the building?
Any future modifications to the existing dwelling must be consistent with the residential provisions...
Hold on, the existing dwelling must be consistent...
With the residential provisions.
With the residential provisions.
Of the Massachusetts building code. Right, that's good.
I think you should put it, if you're going to put it, you don't even take residential out, you're just going to have to put it, you're going to have to write it as Massachusetts State Building Code.
Massa... Yeah, Massachusetts State Building Code.
Massachusetts State Building Code.
Yeah. Well, they do have a provisions for residential and under two, and commercial, right?
Yeah, there's, there's an actual commercial, yeah. So, it's just better to say the Massachusetts State Building Code.
And the Town of Dartmouth Building Department? And the Town of Dartmouth, and the Town of Dartmouth Building Department. After the Massachusetts Building Code.
Which is the same, we don't have our own, so.
All righty.
...enforces the building code.
Codes, yeah.
I can throw more code in, Mr. Attorney Manning.
So, gentlemen...
I just don't know which ones yet.
Well, this is important, I just want to know, is there anything else that you think we need to add? Obviously, when I get the final version of this, if there's some little word here or there, we can go over that. I'll just, I'll disseminate it amongst all of us before I find, I have a final signature on it. But I think this pretty much addresses everything that they've brought forth. I don't like the fact that we have this APR, I really don't, but hey, it is what it is. And that's for, they have to deal with it, it's for them to enforce, not for us. And I, and I think that we kind of, we've, we've done that where we're saying, it's going to be a residential structure, but yet, it cannot be occupied as a residence. Can be occupied as, for other reasons, but not as a residence.
I agree with that, I do. We do allow, under our zoning bylaws, we allow home occupational to, some kind of businesses to be whatever they need to...
Yeah, very limited.
Yeah, but still...
Yeah, this is limited, yeah.
600 feet, well, I mean, square feet, yeah, I mean, they can do that, so...
But still, the main character that's being utilized is still as a residence, it's only a portion of it is for home occupation. All right. Well, Dr. Agi's recused himself, so I don't have to look over there.
I think we need a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, well...
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. So, gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve case number 22, 2022-01.
No, no, no. Is that it?
Yeah, it's an old case.
2017-02, what are you looking at?
Application variance, 2022-01.
Really?
No, I think at the top of this, it might be incorrect. So, hold on, gentlemen, let me make sure I get the right one.
Nope, I have it here, you're right, it is 2022.
Let me have you start that over, let's make sure we got the right one. According to this, it's 2022-01.
That's correct.
Okay.
Use, use variance.
Start over.
Use, yes, I make a motion, I make a motion to approve case number 2022-01 for property